Okay. Good evening, Holliston. Sorry, we had technical difficulties for just a couple of minutes, but welcome to the September 11th Holliston School Committee meeting. We do have, Dawn is participating remotely for the very beginning, so I'm going to read the remote meeting statement. Pursuant to the Governor's March 31st, 2025 Act, Relative to Extending Certain COVID-19 Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency, Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law GLC 30A Paragraph 20, The Holliston School Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the town's webpage as soon as possible in accordance with keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. At this time, a roll call attendance vote will be taken. Joe?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Hillary?
Yeah.
Tracy?
Here.
Dan?
You.
I'm here, and Dawn?
Here.
Okay. So we are all here. Wanted to start, just to acknowledge this is September 11th, and something kind of really nice happened here this morning at the high school. Okay. So we wanted to just play a video of that to start off this meeting, just to kind of level set our minds here.
Go to Zoom and share your sharing.
Go to Zoom.
Go ahead and share. Just go ahead and share. Just click on the share button.
Okay. Here.
Is that share sound?
Sorry, yep.
Click that check down, share.
Okay. Come back to this. Yeah. Okay. Yes. Should I turn up the volume? Did you take the audio?
Thank you, thank you. Remembering my love is never used. Remembering who may I be, always find the office, always strange. Let's continue the rest of our days with reverence and respect. Thank you.
All right. So thank you, everyone. And I wanted to especially thank Sean Billado and Dan Rice, who are the Holliston High School faculty that helped with that. And then our high school musicians, Min Lee, Ally Forbes, and Cyrus Tobin. So really nice job. Appreciate that performance.
Dan is our new music guy.
I know.
He's right.
Yes.
Excellent.
Okay. So getting back to the agenda. Okay. So we do have just a couple of things on the consent agenda. Minutes from the August 28th meeting and grants. Just a couple of grants from the PTO, I believe.
When should you approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dawn? Dawn?
Sarah, are you like thinking?
Oh, I just, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dawn.
Yes.
Okay. And then Sarah is yes.
So the mics are for the television?
Yeah. I'll just try and speak louder. Sorry.
This is the microphone you all need to project to.
Okay.
I might flip Dan if he comes.
Okay. Okay. So at this time, we would love to hear from our student representatives.
So, Don and Donna have high school this week. Auditions for the fall musical into the woods for this week and summer school start next week.
Fall sports are also going very well. Our school has their first regular season game in Midland last week. It's a complete victory. The Red Sea, our student section, had a pack, was packed at our way game. So lots of schools here with on display.
Certain clubs have picked off their meetings. For example, Circle Oak had a bake sale which gave over $200 to the less fortunate areas around Boston. And investment clubs, which could use a new head for a school investment competition, has begun a competition track.
We have a few notable student athletes from the last few weeks, including seniors Austin Rogen, Kaiser on football team, Julie Galco on the field hockey team, and Claire Fitzgerald on soccer team. Additionally, we have Kate McGarrett, which carried us off more on soccer team. And they were all recognized by the Metro West.
Last Friday, there was the first captain meeting of the year to step its own leadership and sportsmanship for the year ahead.
For another meeting, guidance counselors held a great wide meeting for seniors about college applications, who very well received. And colleges have begun sessions in school counseling offices every day as well.
At the football game tomorrow, youth action team for H-DAS will be holding a fundraiser from 6 a.m. to 8 p.m. Some items to benefit the great work of the organization.
I know from our organization, Student Advisory Council, they've begun gathering information regarding student body opinions on the new battle schedule, bus day, and school start and impacts.
More information coming. And the high school club fair is next Thursday, September 18th. All student-led clubs and organizations will be on display for the student body to explore possible and just hopefully great new clubs.
And then a lot of these same clubs and organizations will be attending Celebrate Holliston on Saturday, the 20th, for a community outreach and fundraising.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We'll move on to school committee individual comments. So Joe?
As was just mentioned, 24th anniversary of September 11th. And I just remember the days after that attack. We were so united. I was just so inspired by all the kindness of fellow Americans. And I hope that in memory of the victims, that we can strive to become more empathetic and kind of nation. Obviously, everyone's seen what's been going on in the news the past couple of days. Things are so polarized and heated. And I just hope that we can bring the temperature down and treat each other with respect. Yeah, echo what Joe said. 9/11, never forget. Times of new generations coming in. Most, not all, most students don't even tell what they're doing. Yeah, or even born. And, you know, 9/11 has been a big, it's been a past few years. No, I think we should go back and remember that's what it's like to be kind and humble.
I had the opportunity to, in a different district, here come a couple of seventh graders who had written poems about 9/11 and shared those today. And it was interesting to hear their perspective because they were not, one, they were born well after 9/11. But to hear them talk about what it's like to grow up in a 9/11 world, as they put it, and their message of coming together as a community, I think that was what they would be.
Certainly echo the sentiments prior to me. And there's a lot to process, even still 24 years later. If I could just shift a little bit to the positive. I had the ability or privilege, I guess, or the ability to attend a CTEC meeting with our Parents Advisory Council on Tuesday this week. And I got to see Dr. Cataldo's presentation. And I was also really impressed with the number of teachers and staff that were in attendance just to support our, all of our students. And I was very impressed by that.
So Celebrate Holliston is coming up on the 20th of September, and they just announced the new, our latest citizens of the year, Jane Guilfoyle and John Cronin. I just want to congratulate both of them. Jane's been a long time volunteer in town with the Food Pantry, Historical Society, and until recently Celebrate Holliston. And then John has been a long time elected official and is current member of the Sewer Commission. So, you know, a lot of giving back to the town. So congratulations to both of them and hope everyone shows up for Field Day.
Yep. And I will just echo what everyone else has said. I think you all did a good job, so I won't elaborate more. Do we have, I believe we do have?
Can't hear about Dawn's.
Oh, Dawn, do you have anything?
No. And no additional comment. Thanks, Sarah.
Okay. Sorry. I believe we do have some public comment. Jess, do you want to come up to the microphone?
Should I go here? Doesn't matter which seat.
That's fine.
Jess, I'm from 16th and 17th Street. I had originally planned to speak today about how the school start times have been rough for my family children. From our children struggling this weekend to come out of regular school, to the challenges of simply eating dinner together as a family, with something more urgent to come up. This morning, my children's school bus was involved in an accident. This is the second accident, bus accident, my eight-year-old has experienced in his day. But that's thinking two bus accidents in a row here. Most students go through their entire school careers without experiencing anything one. That's not the concern in our sector. After speaking with other parents, I've learned that our experience cannot be missed. More and more families are contemplating stories of unsafe driving, accidents, and ongoing concerns. I completed 12 years of education without a single bus incident. Yet my third grader has already handled two. Something is clearly wrong. While last year's bus aid incident was once weather-related, and to my knowledge, not the fault of the driver, I have far more serious concerns about bus accidents this year. We personally witnessed speeding stopping abruptly and accelerating too quickly. My children have told me they're drawn forward at every stop, and two of them have come home nauseous from the ride. Today's accident only adds to that growing concern. Several bus drivers have privately shared that they feel pressured to stick to unrealistic route schedules. If that's true, it points to a much bigger issue, not just with our transportation department, but with the decisions being made at the administrative level. I understand that the administration made a commitment to certain timelines in order to score the new school start times. But no commitment, no policy, no schedule should ever come and give sense of student safety ever. So I have to ask, when will administration acknowledge the miscalculations in the plans of these bus routes? When I raised concerns about this months ago to Dr. Jordan and members of the school committee, I was dismissed. In fact, I was told that once the Woodland Street Bridge reopened, we would shorten our bus routes, but the opposite has occurred. We've actually added time to the morning routes, pushing pickups even earlier. This is a direct result of poor planning by the school committee, poor calculations from administration, and an overall achievement of dismissing anyone who questioned the math methodology. Now my children have been put in harm's way, and I'm asking for accountability. What steps will the administration take starting now to ensure our transportation system is safe? And what will the school committee do to hold leadership accountable for meeting basic safety standards? Thank you.
Thank you. Megan?
Do I just tell my address?
Yep.
Megan Schwartz, I'm eighth or Cheryl Lane. First of all, I want to thank, I'm never reading my.
That's fine.
I want to thank all of you guys for your hard work, loving the school start this year. I know it was a major undertaking that required countless hours of standing. And especially want to thank Dr. Slaney and Mr. Akain for their leadership throughout this transition. Their communication's been incredible. That said, I'm here because I'm deeply concerned about the safety and well-being of my children on buses. My children, Liam in fourth grade and Jackson in first grade, have repeatedly complained with compelling reports. The buses are consistently overcrowded with brief students squeezed to a seat, even the older kids, which leads to the question, how are they going to safely transport band instruments as snow air come winter? The driver on bus six has been speeding, braking hard, pulling away before younger students are seated, causing them to fall in the aisle and feels sick after he tried. My children come home every day feeling sick. At our Cheryl Lane stop, while the students were still waiting to board on September 2nd, the bus rolled backwards several feet as my neighbor was about to get on the bus. It almost knocked her over and would surely run her over if she was knocked down. This is a serious issue. My fourth grader has also been told that his personal basketball was to be stored in the trash can as part of the bus and came home in tears one day because the trash was so disgusting. What does this say about how we're treating, telling our students we're going to treat their things if we want them to treat our school and the school thing respectfully? Yesterday, he was yelled at by the truck bus driver after sitting on his truck case. He didn't know where else to put it after leaving school because the seats next to him were full. So being a nine-year-old, he tried to problem solve, albeit not well, and decided sitting on the case was the best option. The bus driver yelled at him to sit down. Being confused because he thought he was sitting, he hesitated, and the bus driver yelled "Are you deaf?" at my nine-year-old in front of my five-year-old on the bus. Earlier today, the situation escalated further. This morning, I emailed at 10:30 that I felt that I was struggling to feel safe putting my children on this bus. Little did I know they had been in a bus accident earlier that morning. I didn't know because we didn't get notified until 11:57. My children told me that they were not evaluated until lunchtime after they had been in a bus accident. The lack of communication is unacceptable. Parents should never be left in the dark when it comes to their children's safety. At this point, these are not isolated incidents. They form a clear pattern of unsafe practices, poor communication, and in some cases, inappropriate treatment. Parents were assured last year that when the tax override was passed, the student safety and reliable transportation were priorities. Yet families are experiencing, do not reflect that commitment. I'm asking for a full investigation into these issues. Sorry, CTEC. Immediate action to address overcrowding and driver conduct and clear communication protocols so parents are informed right away when an incident occurs. The safety of our children must be unnegotiable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Speak to someone.
Sure, yeah.
It's all right. So, working backwards, 10:30, that is also when the schools became aware of the accident as well. And as quickly as we can, it's first putting together like the specific students impacted. And assessing those students during that period of time happened between 10:30 and the point at which the communication went out. So that's, that's part of it. I understand that we're aware of, although that's under investigation right now with traffic, the Holliston Police concerning this accident on bus six, is that the driver was not aware that they had touched the car, hit the car during that period of time. I think it was reported at a later point in time by a citizen, potentially. I don't have the full details, but I do know that that's the point at which we became aware as a school, as a school system. And I can speak to Dr. Slaney and Mr. Akain immediately and quickly getting those communications and information back to us at Central Office and our ability to get that communication out to families immediately at that point. Our bus, bus six, specifically speaking to bus six, that is something that we're, you know, I'm not going to speak to personnel or what we're doing with that situation there. But it is something that we're looking into this afternoon. Mr. Holmes, who runs the bus company, drove our bus six in the afternoon and is looking into this issue along with the Holliston Police to kind of assess what those next steps might be concerning the accident. But we're still gathering information as it relates to the accident. I do have, you know, a presentation to talk about some of the times to kind of speak to some of, some of the disparities as far as last year's times, the length of those routes, and where we are with that. I can wait to that, that point in time. But, you know, we, our buses, while we do have some buses that are crowded, are not, are not by state rigs overcrowded. The short kind of preview to the presentation that we have, our, on our buses, they can run up to 77 students on those buses. When we do our routing and why we reach out to families far in advance and set deadlines for when families can, can respond that they need transportation is because we set those routes, they take several weeks for us to build those routes efficiently. That said, we do have families that, a lot of families that then are put on wait lists and very much wants to be put on buses. So as long as we're, especially at the beginning of the year, not hitting those like limit points, we do add students to buses. And then as we get into the year and we start, we start having settling, we'll try to transition six, seven students to different sites, different bus routes. We do have situations where we do have pretty full buses for the, for the year. The, the locations where we would typically try to, it takes a couple of weeks that like we have what our actual ridership will be in the morning or in the afternoons, that we understand like how many students we can put on a bus. But that's kind of where we are with kind of our ridership. But it is in our plan, especially some of our very, very full buses, is to lessen that ridership and find that balance in kind of some of the adjoining bus runs that run next to that.
I think the, we, the investigation is underway. And anytime an investigation is underway, then we will, I assume Mr. Holmes will have somebody else in, but I really can't confirm if it's specific to personnel. But I will note that Dr. Jordan and Mr. Holmes have worked and have taken this very seriously. And I think we can resolve this matter pretty quickly.
Is it reasonable to, could we possibly update out to those families either tomorrow or Monday at the latest?
We have school tomorrow, so it gives you a little, little time to work through that.
Yeah. We, we are still awaiting details to understand like the nature of the accident and kind of where we can go from there concerning the accident.
Is there anyone on Zoom who wanted to?
Don't see anything else.
Make public comment.
If you're looking for a public comment on Zoom, if you could use the raise your hand feature? I don't see anyone.
Okay. Okay. Shall we move on to, we've got three policies that we were going to review and hopefully vote on, so.
Oh, tip one up.
Oh, sorry.
Go back.
We have one public comment from Lisa Willis.
Lisa Willis.
Hi, good evening, my pleasure. My reception is Juan, I'm not in town at the moment. I appreciate everyone gathering, and I would like to speak on behalf of my other fallen families on bus six. The current safety concerns are extremely disheartening and concerning. And I do appreciate the immediate attention that has been brought to the situation after today's accident. However, I don't feel as though an actual bus crash on the way to school should be the take to address the safety concerns that have been raised for the last two weeks. I live at 76 Cheryl Lane, next to Reagan Schwartz, whom I observed the bus roll back accident. And it was my child who was about to board the bus when it was left in a parked position and rolled back before she boarded. It was extremely concerning, disheartening, and it is completely unacceptable. I am asking the school chief, with my fellow families on bus six, to please investigate this, take action. We do not want a disaster or someone to get injured. And we don't want something bad to happen other than something today. I understand trying to get to school, you know, with this whole merge, school start times is stressful. From the start of school on August 46th, it has felt every day as this bus has been rushing to get to school to meet a start time. And they have put our children's safety last. And it is unacceptable change needs to happen now. And I want to make sure that that was understood by us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to hear it. Mr. Holmes does take this incredibly seriously. He wrote this, but not just the accident, but some of the other issues that have been raised over the last couple of weeks. Part of the reason why he's riding the bus or driving the bus currently is just to assess, one, the crowding, some of the questions about instruments and balls, and some of the other things as far as taking an assessment of that route relative to other routes to see what adjustment. see what adjustments may need to be made. And for, for him, one of the best strategies to do that is just ride the route and, drive the route in the morning, the afternoon, and assess the pickup locations and what changes may need to be made.
Okay. Why don't we move on to policy? The first one was IMG, which had to do with service animals in school.
Yep, this is a change to an existing policy. We reviewed this this week in our policy subcommittee meeting with some additional language that was provided, recommended to the district. You can see that's some of the track changes. So in the first paragraph, there are, there's some minor tweaks in language and then additional paragraph added. Do we need to read through, do we need the whole thing?
Do we need to read the whole thing? Or?
You're not, unless it's a, you only read the changes when it's amended.
So in the first paragraph, the new language would say, "The district will comply with Massachusetts and federal laws concerning the rights of individuals with disabilities with service animals on school premises and on school transportation." And then adding a third paragraph, which states, "When an animal is brought to school, the district staff may ask only two specific questions to determine whether the animal qualifies as a service animal. One, is a dog a service animal required because of a disability? And two, what work or task has a dog been trained to perform? Staff are not allowed to request any documentation for the dog, require the dog to demonstrate its task, or inquire about the nature of the person's disability. Proof that the animal has been certified, trained, or licensed as a service animal is not required." And then, new language on the second page. "A service animal may be excluded if the school principal or authorized doesn't need to determine that a service animal is not housebroken, or if the animal is out of control and the animal's handler does not take effective act or action to control it. If a service animal is excluded, the person with a disability will have the opportunity to participate in the service program or activity without the service animal." And then finally, new language at the bottom of the page. "If any student or staff member is allergic to dogs or suffers an allergic reaction, then the school will work to accommodate both the individual with a service animal and the individuals who experience an allergic reaction. An alternative plan will be developed by the building principals and district staff, which may include reassignment to a different classroom."
Just, is that?
That's the rule.
Just so I'm clear, anyone watching home is clear, this is a separate policy from a therapy bug, correct? This is just if you have a service animal for yourself.
Okay, does anyone have questions about?
No, the, the advice you've got to update this is that, is that we could reference the 28th CFR Part 35, you were saying incorporated there?
Yes, we actually had a situation, it's about two years ago, but these things take time to go through. So this was some language that we worked with the Office for Civil Rights, and they recommended this language to us. And some of it, you can see, even though there's some strange language, it's not all new because they actually just took some of our old language and just tweaked a little bit. So there's even less changes than it looks like. The big, the change that I think is the most important is that piece with the third paragraph is where the real new piece is, because it's the language about when someone says they have a service animal, we're not looking for verification is really the most important part, and I don't think that, that happened. It's more just when we have animals on campus, we always want to make sure other children don't feel unsafe, so we do take things very seriously. And this will just clarify this language for staff once it's revised.
Do you have editing privileges right now?
Yes.
Just third paragraph from the bottom, six line down, just fix the spelling and principles and we'll publish it.
So I'd make a motion to approve amendment to policy IMG, as amended to fix this.
Can we do, oh, move it. Oh, in favor? That passes.
The next one is gifts to, gifts to and solicitations by staff.
Okay. I changed that just.
At the very bottom, if you scroll to the last page, there is some new language which is added through recommendation by MASC around raffles and games of chance to align with some state regulations. So the new language added at the bottom is by state law and regulation, raffles and games of chance may not be organized by schools as a sponsoring organization. Employees are thus far from participating in such activities unless students as a member of a sponsoring organization such as a parent or booster organization as defined by state law and regulation. All gifts and donations to the district must be accepted by a local school committee.
Any questions here?
Do you want to just add of the Holliston School Committee there? I just realized that.
Make a motion to approve the amendment to GBEDC, gifts to and solicitations by staff as amended to improve our housing.
Oh, in favor? That passes 7-0. And then, yeah, the last one?
The last one is also a change to an existing policy, this is visitors to the schools. We already have an existing policy about visitors to the school. The only language we're adding is in the second paragraph, where we say requests should be made at least 48 hours in advance to allow proper arrangements to be made.
Any questions on that one?
Was this a recommend, can you just tell me about what prompted that change?
Yeah, so this is another recommendation by MASC. Our existing policy just did not have any specification around how visitors are going to, when visitors need to notify the school they would like to come in to visit the school, not just to come to pick up your child or, but to come into the building to visit. So MASC recommended that we request 48 hours to make an arrangement.
So I make a motion to approve policy KI, visitors to schools amended, amended to,
Oh, in favor? That passes as well.
I just had a couple of questions.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, well, it wasn't quite done, but I was just thinking about it. How does this play out with, say, a child's IEP meeting? You're a visitor to the school, right? Are you then putting the, the burden on the parent to request that they can be a visitor for their child's meeting? And does that have to be writing? Is it wrong? What's sufficient?
Yeah, no, this really is for if somebody wanted to come in and visit the classroom and observe. We do sometimes get consultants that are, you know, request during an IEP meeting sometimes to come in and do an observation from a private consultant coming in. So that would be a setting where we would want to make sure they take it 48 hours notice and they would go through the SFA and the SS, the director as well.
No expectation if you've invited parents in for a meeting that they have to make a request to with 40, okay.
No, this is for just to go into the classroom piece and the meetings themselves. If they were done in the classroom, it wouldn't be when kids were there, so that would not be considered the classroom.
I just don't want to slow things down too. If a teacher wants to meet with a parent, we shouldn't have to kick it off two days because of this. And when we say request, do you, are you, is your expectation of written request, or can people call in and request and?
I think both, right?
They, they can call in and we usually have a sign or release because obviously they are privy to hearing confidential information in the classroom, so we want to respect all students in a classroom setting. Do you have concern about if a parent came in for a meeting? It's not uncommon in any other place they've worked as well, so I'm sure here a parent automatically is going to come into the building, there's not an issue. And then sometimes we invite parents to go to the classroom after the meeting, sometimes it's not appropriate because the student gets distracted, and we work with parents on those issues, but they wouldn't have to sign anything at that point. But we're really more concerned for a parent that might want to go in and do an observation of their child.
And I'd say there are very few and far between them get these types of requests.
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Do we, do we again, or just? Okay, I'm in favor. Great, that passes as well. Okay, moving on to central office updates.
I think it's been a very busy opening to the school year, but we've had a lot of good successes as well. I just was happy the last couple of days I was able to visit, and I did my check-in with Principal Manning yesterday, and we visited classrooms at the middle school, and then today, Mr. List and I were able to get to some classrooms. Also, I was invited to be a mystery reader. Thank you, Ms. Nam, for inviting me in early in the year. I don't usually do that till later in the year, so that was fun to be able to read with some fourth grade students at Miller. So I'll be starting roundtables again soon. This is the best part of the job, when you get to be with kids, so it was nice to be able to interact and see some students the last few days as well. That's all I got for me. We had our first new teacher orientation meeting of the year, which went really well. Jay learned a lot about our district curriculum accommodation plan, which is going to be revised this year. We had, I ran mentor training for new mentors in the district, starting tonight, and we have our first full PD day tomorrow, which I'll report out at the next school committee meeting. That's it.
I participated in the site visit for the 40B housing development over on Lowland and walked that facility with all of the local authorities and the size and the potential impact it could have on not just the community, but the school system as well. It is a 250 unit complex that, that would have two entrances off of Lowland. There are some interesting things, and, you know, there might be a time, as that project moves further along, that the schools and school committee kind of involve themselves as far as what that conversation will be and what that, how that project should evolve in the future. The, the, I, that, that project, but also just with the kind of our transportation plan and some of our, our start of the year, I've been just very impressed with Frank, our new town manager, and also Chief Stone, Chief Cassidy, Mark Franks, and Robert Walker, as we kind of approach the capital at the start of the year, and some of that collaboration that's occurred over the, over the start of the school year.
Can I add one more thing before transportation? Because this will probably come up at another date. There has been some concerns on, and every year this comes up, Mark Tree Lane, right? Is it Lane or? The street adjacent to the fields has been a problem with traffic and parking, people running late and things like that. So there is going to be some more work, and we're meeting tomorrow with Chief Stone and the town manager, and Dr. Jordan and I are meeting to discuss how to try to help with that matter. The parking is not going to be allowed, the cars will be towed. I do believe Mr. List has communicated some of this as well, but, you know, the implementation of that is challenging, and it does fall on the police department as well. And all we really can do is help support and communicate that that change is taking place.
Quick update on that. I think, I think the, going into the select board meeting, I believe, there was, I think they were thinking a swifter vote of, and they were thinking more like the high school and the parking that's there. I think there are a lot of questions around what can some have access and not, so we're looking, we're going to be meeting to discuss like what would be, would there be certain times that people wouldn't be able to park, because residents would, don't want no act, don't want, did not have any access to be in a parking in front of their house at certain times, so figuring out what some of those nuanced situations were, and then moving to kind of the next, next time there's a select board meeting as far as that.
Are we looking at all at our own high school parking lot to see if there's any creative solutions like additional parking behind the building that we might be able to set up and allocate to staff to create more parking? I mean, the problem stems from a need for more parking. So unless we're willing to put parking on Hollis Street where the sidewalks were recently done and have parallel parking there, I can't imagine how else we could create more parking in here.
Yeah, and I think the tricky part, just like we do with the other buildings, is we do have the service road behind the building, so we have to avoid any parking near that. And so I don't know what we would do if we had to add parking. I don't know that that would be addressed back there.
I mean, we, we definitely, like, as far as like where people can park, that's something we've engaged with Chief Cassidy, Dr. Kusman and I, Dr. Kusman before. I was, as far as, as you discussed, not just Miller Placetino, but the high school, as far as where, especially if you go by Central Office and you move back there, as far as what you're able to, most of it's covered by grass as far as like what you're able to park on and, and not. I think if we, if we were looking at digital parking, we'd be looking at some type of, yeah, project to expand the pavement as well as the grass areas.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Dr. Cattano, I don't have you on here, but do you have any updates here? Welcome to.
I would just share that I've started going into buildings and touring all the classrooms and trying to put the names to the faces of students. I've met a number of the students in our transition program here at the high school, and was blessed with a beautiful piece of artwork on my desk when I came back today. And tomorrow will be our professional development day, and I'll be doing a three-hour presentation, interactive presentation in the afternoon for the parents. So I'm very excited about that. And just continuing to get to know people and see how I can make positive contributions, but there's a lot of positive things going on in the district.
Thank you. Mr. List, I just realized, we can move you up if you would like to.
I was going to ask.
I wasn't really thinking earlier, but.
Funny, you know about parking to answer.
If you would like to shift gears into something that I think people might like better. You were here to talk about an update to the handbook.
Yes, so I, you saw copies of the proposed pilot for our seniors to be able to leave campus when they have substitutes. By the end of last year, when we were looking at the data, 75% of seniors were being dismissed when they had a substitute. That is very overwhelming to our, our office staff. We also are very limited on the amount of subs that we have to even cover classes, so this allows for some, some resources for us there as well. In the document, we talked about it as a privilege, not a right, and so students had to treat properly. One of the concerns that we're trying to answer with this is how do we know which students are on campus and not on campus? Mr. McLeod was able to work out a system where students have to come to the office and can put in their ID numbers, and that marks them on, on the attendance in Power School to let us know that they're not on campus. So if there's ever an emergency, we know that they're not on campus, and obviously they have to come back on time and, and be where they're supposed to be. So that's, they're happy to answer any questions about it, but that's the gist of the pilot we'd like to try this year. Whatever you want.
What, should we describe any of this will be in the handbook? What is with this name?
It tends to be.
They make good choices. We don't even put the dictionary.
So I will be, I will be honest with you, they have language sometimes to give us a little bit of leeway in certain situations, just to be completely transparent. But it, it tends to be that the students are making good decisions. You know, we don't tie it to, it's not tied to, you know, it's good standing, it necessarily grades, nothing, they, it's a, about the behaviors that are being exhibited.
Where is that?
It's in the first, rules in the first. Eligibility.
What's the check-in system?
So they have to be naked, so the attendance checks, so because Mr. McLeod was able to tie it into Power School, it allows us to, the actual attendance checks them back in. So when they're, come to their next class, that means they're back in, in the building. If they come earlier, they have to check in, just like any students out, doctors appointment, things like that, they come back in, so. But, yeah, I don't, I don't know how he did it, but he was certainly able to do it, so that part I don't understand. But he was able to make it so that, that it all happened. So a parent, when you can know, you can look at Power School and see that your child's left. The other piece is like any of these, any of this that we have. The other piece is like any of these, any of this that we have. And after this, send an opt-in for parents to do this. Like that's any of the privileges that they have.
Specifically for this or?
You know, well, I mean, it's, it's in the, the annual verification. That's like where it normally lives, but that's already happened. This will be a separate document that parents have to opt in.
How, how do you monitor it for like kids that are not eligible, that their parents haven't opted in, but they're checking out? Is that?
That's the fun part. No, I mean, it's, it, that's what we, I mean, that's part of this. If we're, we're piloting this, right? So we have some aspects of it where we have to do some cross-referencing now to make sure it's, it's happening and happening appropriately. And then if students can handle it, then it's something we see is working. And if they can't, then we, you know, we go back to what it is now. But yes, there is a little bit of extra work in sort of cross-referencing and checking out each day. It goes, another part of it, going back into Power School allows our attendance secretary to, and she runs like, for example, she runs reports at the end of every day for students who, she doesn't make class. And so we're able to see that. So this would look the same, the same way if there was without me in class. And where she'd be able to see that.
I make a recommendation to paint eligibility just slightly. So only seniors in good standing may, in good standing, may participate, solely for the determination of the administration. So essentially, you're just defining it as you're.
Determination, yeah.
You're determining it.
Sure.
And then it just says this, this may be removed, this privilege may be removed for the class or an individual student. Something like that, where, so.
Dr. Cusco is doing it.
I'm, I'm putting the suggestions, but I didn't get the second part.
Oh, it's just to basically, so it's not implicated to say administration made, determined to remove, it's just basically saying this can be removed at any time.
Okay.
Basically just saying, so if someone challenges you, what's good standing? Like, you know, what I.
Yeah, I mean, every student is different. Every student has different challenges in the building. And so it really, you know, a lot of the discipline now works based on the needs the student to have, and what's happening, some of the stuff is, you know, straightforward. But in these kind of situations, you know, it, it needs a little bit of flexibility in working with kids.
Well, I'm suggesting, I'm just simply suggesting to find and, and clear that it is your determination.
The entire classes of students leaving the building at the same time, how are we ensuring security at the door? Because that could be cropped open for quite some time. The school resource office could be monitoring it or?
So I mean, because as far as they all have to go through the front door. So that door doesn't, that's actually one of the doors. We don't have any issue with getting cropped open. But I mean, in theory, I guess, well, someone's going out, going in. But that's, we have the front office staff right there in the camera. The resource officer's office is like right there at that two-door. So that's, I mean, again, that's all part of the monitoring process of what, you have to, what to see, how it plays out.
Well, you already have 75% of the students leaving.
Well, yeah, I mean, of the seniors, yeah, yeah, seniors. Not all, this is all students, the seniors. They have quarrels on campus, so they leave, yeah, so.
Are you using the same check-in, checkout system with students who have other privileges outside of the substitute?
So we haven't previously, but we will start using it for internships, senior projects, things like that. Now that the resource office will figure out how to make it work now.
So even like lunch, they'd have to, if they were leaving, they'd have to.
Not lunch yet. Lunch would be a big mess right now. We tried to pull that off, but we, yes, I don't have a good answer to that. We tried, we were trying to play with some systems for that. They do have a QR code they're supposed to, they're supposed to use. But that is one area that we do struggle with.
You know, go, go in the room, get changed, okay?
Someone, someone needs to mute.
What?
Someone needs.
Who's, who's better?
Oh. Clean your diaper.
Who is it?
So that is, that is, we have to, I think lunch has been.
I got it.
I actually, in putting this in place, we're not new. Doing this, we'll struggle with substitutes. And so I was actually at the football game talking to the Wayland principal. We were talking about this. They have like, you know, we have this from like 10 through 12. And so they, they have, you know, their, their systems are, they have like key cards now that they can scan and things like that that we had to put in place.
What's the process for parents to update the privilege opt-in? Is there a process or is it like, are they in the beginning of the year or?
Parent, well, they are going to end at any time. They can reach out, but they'll send something out that they need to participate. Bring it, yeah.
But they already, the other opt-in happened at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, so yeah, normally this would, so this would live in future years, this would live in the annual, annual verification opt-ins. And we're hoping to, to, with the leaving on campus, to, you know, to, you'll hopefully slow down because we have speed bumps being finished. That's why I thought you wanted the safety here, not the doors. So with the parking one, but. They're one to five mile an hour speed bumps, so please go slow over there.
Speed bumps out there are not really speed bumps. What, the ones that go a lot are in there?
They're, no, I'm saying they're, but the ones that we're putting in are. Yeah. Don't slow.
No comment.
What?
Any other questions? Are you ready to continue?
I'm looking to approve the proposed senior pilot for privilege for off-campus during teacher absence. Part of the handbook, right?
Yeah, it's on the handbook, yeah.
Part of the high school handbook.
All in favor? That passes? Thank you.
All right.
Dr. Jordan, yeah, I guess, sorry, we're kind of jumping around here. Apologize, but we'll go back to Dr. Jordan now.
Just go right to the slide. So last, last year, and not just last year, but kind of leading up to the year, the school committee, one, made some policy changes to improve transportation, made some commitment of funding in addition to assist with transportation, and was, and put together a, a transportation subcommittee that Frank, who's there, had the privilege to be, oh, Joe did too. Joe, Frank, as far as having the privilege to be a part of. You know, while it had its tough moments, it was a way for us to really vet out the things that the community valued and wanted to see and any improvements that we wanted to make to transportation. That included some challenging sacrifices that they needed to be made as well. The outcome, or the recommendation out of that committee was to, one, that the district day is not to start before 7:30 a.m. nor end after 4:00 p.m. Two, the scheduling of schools should be thoughtful around student sleep for high school and middle school students. Limit the impact on teacher retention and limit the impact on after-school activities, including but not limited to sports clubs, extracurriculars, and after-school clubs. That the Holliston High School and Robert Adams Middle School should not start at any earlier than 7:50 a.m. And buses would run, that was the recommendation based on our analysis, is the bus runs would need to be 50 minutes long per run. The year before, prior to that, so for the '24, '25 school year, bus runs were 45, 45 minutes for that. I feel like we far exceeded that. So if we can kind of talk that to this, the year-to-year comparison, while we've absolutely had, had some trials and tribulations this year, and there are definitely some significant individual challenges that we've had for, for certain individuals as we try to figure this out in certain runs that we've had. Our, in '24, '25, our average bus length for the 15 buses that we ran was 45 minutes. And we did have several buses that ran up to 60 minutes in those bus runs. This year, our average bus run time is 30 minutes. We have zero buses that run at 45 minutes in length. Our earliest pick time, pickup time, meaning the earliest that we had a student at a bus stop last year was 6:30 a.m. This year, the earliest pickup time that we have for a student at the moment is 6:52 a.m. The percentage of bus, bus pickups before 6:45 a.m., so last year, was 32% of pickups, 32% of students that were being picked up are on that route, were picked up before 6:45 a.m. This year, 0% are picked up by that point in time. Percentage of pickups after, say, 7:00 a.m., so the maximum sleep time that we're aiming for, last year, only 32% of students were picked up after 7:00 a.m. This year, 88% of students are picked up after 7:30, or after 7:00 a.m. Last year, by week two into the year, we had buses that were running greater than 20 minutes late to school. This year, we, by the two-week mark, we had, we only had buses that were up to an over one minute. And we are on a, on a streak at the moment of no buses late to, to school that we're hoping to stick to. That isn't to say that, you know, traffic, different things that are outside of our control can get in the way. That happened last week with a water main break right outside of the Duncan Donuts that significantly delayed our, our runs. But I, I just wanted to say that that, you know, speaks to our drivers and their resiliency in adjusting, not only to our Woodland Bridge project over the last couple of years and what they've had to do to kind of adjust to that, but also just being able to pivot very quickly as certain parameters or different things kind of have presented themselves. So if we can go on to the next slide. So factors leading to some improved transportation, and again, and I'll talk a little bit about some of the areas of improvement that we need to still really much kind of tackle and get ahead of. One, the walk zone policy that was put into place by the school committee, that, you know, we, we came in a little bit ahead on some things. One is the walk zone, what that did for us. Not only did that reduce some of our ridership, but it limited the, the in-town traffic that our buses are, especially to our elementary campus, are trying to get through. So we had a lot of pickup points within town, which, as they're picking up, start in backup traffic and creates gridlock and access to our elementary schools. So not just for parents that are driving in, but also for our buses. So that has created not only greater flow for the buses to move into the Woodland campus, but it's also created greater flow for families to move in through downtown. Two, funding for additional buses. We did have an increase in $200,000, $200,000 added to the appropriations budget that we did use that money to bring in two additional, bring in additional buses into our routes for this school year. The, one, within just community feedback, community feedback that the school committee received, but also the Holliston School Committee Transportation Subcommittee, that we were able to kind of really assess and understand what, what were the must-haves, like no-deal types of top things that we did as we really tried to look at how we could do this, these types of improvements to that. One, second, number four, hard-working staff in kind of implementing this, this change. The teachers, paraprofessionals who help with kind of our rival has been incredibly powerful. Creative, creative thinking between the Holliston Public Schools Transportation, Homes Transportation, principals, and local authorities. You know, the, our ability to move buses down Woodland Street without backup other than when we're further into the downtown or not be able to kind of get in to the Woodland campus, get into the elementary schools, and then get out and then get back onto our routes has led to significant improvements. So we've appreciated that creativity. But also our ability to use the Linden Access Road as a way to move hundreds of cars off of the street, clogging traffic downtown, not just for those who are trying to get to the schools, but those who are trying to commute to work as well. It's kind of free that up as well. Kim Sexton has been kind of a dynamo at continual communication as, as emails come in, as special requests come in, and we try to make those adjustments as fast as we possibly can. Or we see major concerns that, that we need to and making those adjustments as fast as we can. The community patience and flexibility, yeah, we, we aimed really big as far as some of our time constraints that we were, because we wanted students to be able to sleep as late as we can. So we started the year with all of our runs, starting after 7:00 a.m. was the target. We didn't hit that target. So that's why we, we moved back time. So that's where we saw some, we tried to, within the first two days, we noticed some immediate concerns, and we immediately moved about four buses by 10 minutes because we knew that no amount of adjustment would, would lead to those, those times being improving. And then we added for most, just five, five more minutes. But those who were part of the four, they received an entirety of 15 minutes. But still, the, the earliest pickup time is the 6:52 at that point. And then lastly, just our drivers, I can't tell you how many different routes or different adjustments or changes that we've had to kind of give to them to kind of make this entirely new process work, to make this entirely new process of our, our two elementary schools coming together and entirely new routes that they're running and not the historical routes that we've had. And just, you know, being able to make that happen very well. Last one, things to improve, definitely, as we heard concerning bus six. Bus six is not one of our, is not the only, you know, one of our crowded buses at this moment. We have some challenges within bus 10 and bus four and some others as far as size. Most of this is, one, some of these runs are larger runs to start, but the predominant cause is our late registrations, which we want to be able to accommodate families. I think the historical practice is to continually accept and always accept people all the way up as you can. And when you do those late additions, when your routes are already built around the assumption of, say, 40 kids that you're going to have on a bus, and you add 20 more in the second week of August, you, you end up, you have to, you have to add them to existing routes. You cannot reroute the district in order to add them in. So you have some buses that are up at like 62, and then you have some buses that are pretty low. But our entire ridership is actually down from the prior year. And we have more, and we have some more buses too. So that just kind of adds to kind of those strengths. So our hope is to now, now that we're at kind of this point, we can start to balance some of our riderships that are at our really crowded buses across some of our other routes that we have. You know, we have some new schedule growing pains that we need to. This is not only just a new busing route, but it's also just kind of a new rival plan at our elementary school and a complete shift there. And then while busing, our transportation software is very valuable, and you know, I feel like I do, I feel like Tim Holmes, and I feel like a lot of our drivers have a very strong understanding of drop points and different bus stops, we're trying to, continuing to try to look at how we can kind of collect feedback and understand, you know, when the, when the software spits out where it thinks that some, a student should be dropped, it's kind of validating that or checking that across our drivers, across our families to understand like what adjustments need to be made before we start this school year.
So, is that?
Yep.
So I just want to congratulate the whole administrative team and everyone. I don't want to name names only because I probably missed somebody and I don't want to do that. This is, this is really phenomenal. Obviously, there are some things to work on. Bus six is, it's, it sounds like a situation that definitely is unacceptable that we need to, to work on and make sure that we, we fix. But if you go back to the, to the data slide, you know, a number of years ago, there was a, there was a very large group of parents who were concerned about early pickups, especially. There was a citizens petition at town meaning to basically, they weren't allowed, but to limit the squeeze from, 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 essentially around 7:00. Sometimes, I think. And so if you look at where we are now, last year, only 32% of pickups were after 7:00. And now we're at 88%. So we, while we haven't exactly achieved the goal of that petition, we're, we're very, very close. We were, you know, almost right on it. And for just a 10-minute move in, in the start time from 7:30 to 7:40 for Miller, you know, we've, we've moved the earliest pickup 22 minutes. I mean, that is just a huge, you know, benefit to, to students for, for sleep, for, you know, lighter, lighter pickups. And cutting that average bus run down from 45 to 30 minutes is, is also, you know, great. I think also the 22 minutes, I just want to say, yes, I mean, obviously, we've got quicker bus runs, but I think it demonstrates that we're not just pushing to get kids to school faster because we could have just, you know, done, you know, 6:40 is the earliest pickup and had the same thing. So it's, it's very rare. You've done, just you and your whole team have done, you know, just a great job really working with what we have and means and tweaks to, you know, improve this. And I, I'll admit, I was a little dubious of the, of the plan at first. But so far, it seems like. it seems like, you know, while there's some work to do in certain areas, it's going really well.
I think to pointing out some of the gains as well, really, I mean, to be able to have our K to two and three to five students that are siblings, it's a big deal to have them all going together. I mean, it's really streamlined schedules for parents, which was a concern of mine. And the gain here was obviously instructional time, ten extra minutes for Placentino and fifteen minutes for other schools. And so to get all of that, we also don't want to lose that time on learning by having kids getting late to school, and that's where Dr. Jordan's done a great job trying to make those adjustments, and he's worked so closely with the principals to have those conversations as well. So nothing is ever perfect, but I think overall, the gains and, you know, in instructional time, the gains in students and schedules and parents to be able to have more flexibility with their students, the benefits seem to be really substantial right now. And yes, that doesn't mean we're not aware of any safety that we still will have to address, and we will continue to address as the year goes on as well.
Definitely, as you see updates, we're going to bring out, so they, super, I mean, to your point, we've got the knowledge without the roofs, this should only get better. At least data says so. I know the way we move backwards, but same time, with that efficiency, what else could we do without, you know, sacrificing any sort of students? Except that is, we need to lengthen the roof a bit. We should have.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, this is, this is, there are areas that we still can show improvement. I think that, you know, I know there's some concerns about some of the moving back ten minutes, five minutes, and kind of moving in that, that direction. I mean, now we have the template, the framework. It, it more or less, the template rolls over year over year, and you're just kind of tweaking it based off of the new riders that you have, but the route is now kind of, the framework is built. But the hardest work, and I want to say to give credit to Heather from, Heather Yates from Holmes Transportation, and then Kim Sexton, as far as like putting a lot of the countless hours that they put in as far as putting these routes out together over the summer, I think will just pay off year after year for us as we do this. And I think that we, we learned a lot about some of our pickup points, points that we want to, safe locations and where we want to make some adjustments. We were going to do some of that on the fly, and I think some of the hard part of making those adjustments on the fly is when, when you make one move, it's like a pin that you pull, it then impacts the other people. So you know every move you're going to make is going to frustrate five people down the road as you do it. So some of them, you had to swallow that pill, and we have to make that move because that's a safe choice that you have to make, and know that I'm going to have to deal with a handful of, like, upset emails, because we have to make this safety decision, knowing that it's going to impact the time for some others.
But just to clear, these statistics are after the five-minute pushback, all the adjustments.
This is after, yeah. This is what we are for the year.
Yeah.
That includes the five-minute.
Yeah. This is our current plan.
Do you have a question?
Before we move on transportation, please give me a moment.
We, public comments.
Sorry, group bus drivers, just want to make a comment if that's possible.
Why would you even say no?
Discretion. So, just wish that the public comments would just stick here.
I will, I will, you can throw me out of your line. I don't think anybody would disagree that safety is a children's power. Given that, and given how we drive buses and so on, why, as a budget item, I don't have such a know anything about budgets, and by the way, thank you very much, I know you work very hard. Why do we not have a bus aid on buses, especially in the first year? Because you realize this, that when a bus is driving thirty miles an hour, it's driving forty feet per second. One or two seconds to tell Johnny to sit down, he's about traveling. One light bulb to the next. A lot can happen in one or two seconds. Why, if I was to, primary concern is the safety of the children. Do we not have a bus aid on each bus to make sure the bus driver is not distracted? It's a question for your partner. The second thing is, I got my voice, actually, I got so emotional about that. I, I will speak for myself as bus driver. My first and primary job is to work from point A to point B safely. I'm not there to monitor the social behaviors, or the mom, the dad, either proof or anything else, I just want to get them to still safety. And when I'm distracted, and it's happened many times, and I need to talk to others, I think that's bad, it's because my eyes are on a mirror looking back. So again, I rephrase my question. If our power model concern is for the safety of the children, why is there not a budget item to make sure there's something on the bus to make sure the bus drivers are not distracted? I'd expect an answer, if you want to pose it. Thank you.
I just want to say, I appreciate that, that feedback. I think it's something that, you know, is always in conversation as far as school business administrators and those who oversee transportation, not just at like that company level of like Holmes Transportation and Connolly and some of the other area transportation companies, but it is a group conversation that we have as, as business administrators, it's like what our area districts are doing and what, you know, what strategies that we're thinking about, to always to kind of improve the integrity and the safety of our buses.
Okay, thank you. Can I, David, I know, I feel like this year you, you worked really hard to, or I think as the administrative team, I saw emails come out, I think earlier than usual, trying to get bus passes together. Anything I guess we could think about over the course of the next year of how to avoid some of these late registrations that seem to really throw things off? And I appreciated that some of that first information came out while we were still in school. Sometimes people are tuning out by the beginning of June, but if there's even a way where the cost increases if you wait until the last minute, aside from movements, right? I can be very sympathetic if someone moves in or isn't, but we need to set up some sort of system where you can't end up with sixty or seventy surprise kids a week before school starts.
One of the things we talked about, what is tricky, so for some students, the transportation is free, so then we can't impose a late fee for that student. And if I know that I don't have to pay, I might, some might just not really worry about getting a slot because they know they'll have a slot. So that's, that's the group, I think, that could be challenging. But we could consider maybe a fee for other late covers, but.
I would say that, like, Kim Sexton and I had that same conversation, and I do, it's kind of like, it's kind of like the cat's out of the bag, and you're, it's already too late, you know, all of a sudden implement the fees, you're like, God darn it, all right, next year we're going to do this. It's, I think that you're right, and I think where districts have had success, making sure that they have the predominance of their routes kind of set far in advance, is that they have an escalating rate fee, leading up to just an all-out, like, no, it's a white wait list, you may never get on a bus past this point, but for the most part, as you escalate the rate, that's, that's, I think some districts have had some success doing that. So that's, it's not been our practice, so I think it, I think it's a good idea. I think it's the type of thing, I would start communicating in the spring that we're going to start doing this. And like, I would say that at a school committee meeting, I would, you know, everybody's like, yep, we're all doing this, and then start sending communications, so it's really no surprise that like, all right, you hit July fifteenth, it's going up ten dollars. You hit August first, it's going up another ten dollars, and, you know, whatever that rate is, that works, but we would do some research on that.
Yeah.
Okay. I apologize, a public comment is, is at the beginning of the meeting?
Hold on, really, that's, that's really not fair.
You, all of you could have spoken during public comment, that's what it's for. So we typically come in and have a piece of paper where people sign up, I think, a number of individuals.
You have two ladies here.
You have four people here.
Better than that, I didn't want to hear a calling you.
I was driving a school bus, which is why I came late, so I was unable to sign. And if people can raise their hand at home, why can we not raise our hand?
The time for that was, was when people were raising their hand. But I apologize, that's just how this works.
We don't feel that that's acceptable. I think that you could give us a few minutes about how much time we have, and things to say, so.
I wish you had, I, you've been here this whole time, I wish you had spoken after just and.
We waited till you got the transportation, and then we brought the sequence.
We will have another meeting with additional public comment in about two weeks. In addition to that, there's other ways to come in and address this, either through emails, but.
It's not public, we're actually kind of staff because we're school bus drivers, so I just don't understand the difference.
Mr. Jordan, what do you think?
It's not my, it's not my call, it's ahead.
It's the school committee's meeting.
Oh, okay. So then why do you want people here? Yeah. I, I think that you could give us a few minutes. I'm sure that the people that are watching would be interested in here, what we have decided. We are the people that work heavily in that.
I'm sorry, you're welcome to come, our next meeting is on.
When we look at our review here, we see six to five.
Okay, yeah, we'll start doing budget. So we have a budget meeting, what was it, Tuesday? And where we discussed our capital request.
Wow.
Thank you.
For the October town meeting. Dr. Jordan, do you have the list of capital items that we?
Yeah, it's in the.
Additionally, just while he's bringing that up, so last night, I think it was, CPC met to discuss the Flag Field project. There was some confusion about the availability of how much, how much funds they have, it's been cleared up today. So they didn't officially vote to support the flag project and fund it, but they sort of voted in, in concept to support it, and they'll be having another meeting later, a town meeting. And so we want to thank them for that support, and that is important because of the Flag Road, which the schools are requesting as part of that project. So this is our, our recommendation for the capital request. Dr. Jordan, do you want to go through some of the items?
Yeah, so kind of starting from the top and working our way down. The Placentino Miller Roof, the request is for 1.35 million. This is approximately half of the total cost that needs to be done for that Miller and Placentino roof. We are waiting on the MSBA rule on our accelerated repair program, on their accelerated repair program. We, they vote on that in, I think it's October 29th. I'm hoping that, you know, might, there might be some information we can kind of get access to ahead of time a little bit, leading up to that, that meeting, to kind of understand where that lies. But it isn't the type of thing that will put us in any kind of like actionable area to use that knowledge by town meeting. The tech replacement, this is our reoccurring fall capital technology request that we have. These are our musts. This is kind of our heavy technology replacement that we, we do that doesn't live within appropriations. I do have, if, Susan, down the bottom tabs, if you click on tech detail. So this, Dan, Mr. McLeod put this together, this is kind of what, what is kind of being covered within our, our tech capital that reaches our 243,000, 250. So we went back to the summary. The Flag, Flag Road, or the Access Road, or the Linden Access Road, whatever we want to kind of name it when we finally make it a viable, significant road. This is 135,910. This is meant to link with the CPC project, which is for the Flag, the Flag Project, which is looking at kind of some crushed gravel, tracks, and basketball courts, a pavilion, and just kind of really redoing that and specifying that area. Kind of looping that in, is the road that is on that, is on the, is on the school property? How do we make that more of a legitimate road that has space for parking and folks to kind of really move their way down and through that road? If we were, if that project were to not move forward, and we were just thinking like, well, what do we want to do with that road? My recommendation would be an overlay. So Susan, if you were to click on the Flag Road detail. The overlay or the top course would go for roughly 46,795. I've spoken about the number of roughly being $50,000 to do that. That would just kind of, the structural purpose of the way the current road is, and we would just lay the asphalt over the top of it. Since we are doing a substantive project for the Flag Road, and we are wanting families to really use that, whether it's for youth sports, or for arrival dismissal, or for whatever, kind of their own personal purposes on the weekends or evenings for it, we want to make it a more viable road. This would mean you would need to kind of reclaim the road, and really chew the entire road up, down to the gravel, re-gravel it, and put that kind of, that gravel binder course down, and that's the $18,000 to the $70,000 to kind of recreate, redo that road, and then you put your asphalt over the top, which is the $50,000. So that's where that 135,000 comes from. In the $750,000 CPC amount is about $25,000 for parking that they're building in to loop in, so the entirety of the roadwork is roughly about $160,000, $170,000, but we're quoting about $160,000. So we went to the summary. So it's then the, which has been on the capital improvement plan for several years, and is something that we need to kind of continue to have, to keep an eye on, is the sidewalks on the Miller and Placentino campus. They were put in, in the parking lot for that matter, put in 1998. Now, granted, there's been patching work and different things that have been done at that point, but if you have young children, or even your children made your way out to middle schools properly, you have noticed the Placentino Miller sidewalks have some good sizable chunks out of it, and it was looked far in advance several years ago to do some repair work on the sidewalks, but also since the, the, the parking lot was done around the same time, is to kind of do an overlay of the parking lot, do some significant patching of the sidewalk, and reline the parking lot. So that is, comes to the amount of $270,000, $175,000 for the parking lot, and then about, then $100,000 for sidewalk repair, to get that into good shape. Finally, is the HVAC rooftop unit. This is the kind of emergency fund that we have for failure. This was, I think it was, I'm blanking on the exact year that the warrant went in for when the HVAC rooftop fund was, was created, but $500,000 was put in that account. That was meant to cover, in an emergency, the large, what would be roughly the cost of the largest rooftop unit that we have. That fund was put into use last year for the rooftop unit above the auditorium at the middle school. If we go into HVAC detail, the cost of that unit, just the actual unit, was $309,000, $309,450. That's just for the unit. The electrical, the electrical, the duct work that needed to be done, some of the roof restoration of where that was put in, and some of the different IT tech work that we're using to kind of advance what technology is, led to kind of that more sizable hit to the $500,000 account. Now, yet, we do have about $121,000 still in that account, in that account, but that is not enough to cover what would be our next biggest, or even some of our smaller units at that point. So what I'm requesting is that we replenish that account so that we are prepared for any emergency that were to present itself. To note, our rooftop units are all about the same age as far as of all the age of the building that they're there, so they're not, they're not falling necessarily, all are not in great, roughly are not in great shape, we just have some that were absolutely failing, so we are going to be in a series of likely replacement over the next 10 to 15 years. We don't want to replace them proactively, we want, I mean, we, as they fail, we want to get ahead of it if we can, but some still have some, are showing still some good life, but others are, are left in the wall.
So October 2021 was when the town meeting approved the 500,000. And just, you know, given the limitations, obviously, the town government and how money is spent, the 350,000, which I think was the largest unit, is larger than the town sort of reserve fund that it has, I mean, it's 250 or 275. So it was put in place to be allowed for that. We're not below. We're not below where our next most expensive one is, and so we're looking to replenish it. One just as an aside, as far as the Placentino Miller sidewalks and parking is a little bit of an anecdote. Last year, I took away a big hunk of sidewalk from a, from a child who was nicely throwing it in front of him as, as he and a friend walked. There were a few other kids in front of him, so it was. It's definitely crumbling section, but it's, um. That said, the town's capital, sort of money that they expect to be for, for capital spending is, is very tight this year. And so this is our list of needs, but there's going to be some more work to be done to come up with a full plan. That is also why it's so important though, that we get a little bit of an idea where CPC was going to be, to know if we were going to, we want to ask for the full amount to do the projects or the, the long-term right way or to do it for temporary kind of patch. So a few things that we'll need to throw on tonight. But before we get to other ones, are there any questions about these projects?
Just for the community to be aware, I mean, if this becomes tangible, we have a list of areas that should happen now versus potentially going to hold down maybe.
Correct. So we, well, this is for October.
Yeah.
So we may come back with a recommendation of prioritization later, but we're not prioritizing at this point. That said, there's that big sort of elephant at the top that depending on sort of whether we get into the, you know, MSBA program or not, could impact timing. And then, you know, it'll be kind of a conversation about if we delay it a year, what does that mean for, you know, because we were talking about the Rams roof. Mr. Keith was very concerned about sort of the longer you wait, the more damage you could in theory do. And then you end up having to go to the more expensive option. It seems like, it seems like Placentino Miller is in better shape, flat portion than the Rams roof was. But it still needs to be done.
Yeah.
It still leaks.
It still leaks, yes.
It still leaks. There, it rains in there. We have tunnels inside that building. That should tell you how bad it was for the middle school like at that point. That was, that one was in rough shape.
Okay.
Okay.
So how do you, how do you want to?
Do we want to vote on that now?
We have three things we need to vote on.
Budget size.
So the first is going to be just to, you know, further our support for, for the CPC flag project. Just that we already kind of supported it, but now as we continue to go forward, I think that it'd be good to re, re-up. No, it's the word. Reaffirm?
Reaffirm.
Reaffirm our, our support for the project. The second is the, the capital request. And then what we haven't talked about is the solar Placentino and Rams. So I had a number of meetings with our sustainability coordinator, a consultant that we have for solar. We had, we had in a budget two times ago and looked at a whole bunch of different options. As we mentioned a little bit last week. Ultimately, if we're going to proceed now with the town's capital where it is, there's really no option to buy. Additionally, the cost savings, while we still need to work on getting the numbers a little bit more firm, the cost savings don't seem to be as significant as they initially did. But the risk, I would say, of operating the system, if you owned it, would put a significant additional burden on, on Dr. Jordan really to make sure that it was up and, up and running. Constantly that if anything, you know, broke, we were replacing it. So we're really looking for a lease. Just rough ballpark, no one holding me to this, but it looks like probably combined doing the lease option, which will have no upfront cost or minimal upfront cost, actually, because there will be a connect, some number of connect charge of 100,000. It will be ballpark 75 to 100,000 in savings a year once turned on. And if it hits all the, the assumptions that we do have. So this is as much a commentary or a sort of a sustainability sort of, you know, project as it is really costing. So, you know, certainly probably not something to budget into our, our budget for the costing, but it does sort of move us towards, you know, our goal of, of being more environmentally friendly, helping where we can, moving towards other sustainable energy.
I think you said this last meeting. Why now?
Oh, well, because the, our partner, Select, is able to safe harbor or in some ways sort of get it into the program before the federal sunset kicks in from the one big beautiful bill.
So if we wait, the cost could go up or the saving, potential savings we're talking about could go down because it will cost more to lease. Because the safe harbor, the credit or the tax deduction is going to reduce the cost for so much, what you pass it on next?
Correct. It's something like 25%. It's not completely known because Massachusetts is also doing some things. So there's some moving parts, but the, I mean, was it 600,000 on 1.8 million or something?
You can pull up the exact numbers.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to be clear, do you feel like we're not pulling this up because, you know, it's rich to me right now? It's more of like there is things that are on a time out that we may lose if we don't consider it now?
Yes, but at the same time, we have talked about solar sort of off and on in the past. And the issue had always been, we have old roofs and we don't want to put new solar panels on old roofs. So now we're putting on new roofs, so, and, and the Placentino solar would be on the new shingle section, not the flat roof portion. And we may revisit at some point, but there was a study a number of years ago for on the Miller side that said that that roof was not capable of handling the increased load of solar panels. So that's why that's not included as part of this. And so the, the town manager has asked that the school committee sponsor the warrant article. I think that they will come in with maybe 1750 and the seniors or the center. There was, there were two town sites, much smaller pieces.
Yeah, 1750. Hold on, I've got this. Give me a second. I can tell you.
So many of these areas were parks and records. I thought it was the center, but no.
I thought it, I'd.
The senior centers, I guess.
I'm blanking on what the other side was, but there were, there were two other sites.
Yeah, but much smaller arrays.
Yes.
So we, so I think we will eventually vote on the actual warrant article itself, but that hasn't been written. Council needs to review it. And to be clear, Don made his point very well, is that this is just to authorize it, to seek town meeting approval to authorize us to enter it into a lease agreement. The lease agreement itself still needs to be written, read by council, and a lot of work is to be done afterward. But because the lease isn't theory long-term debt, you need an affirmative vote by, by the town.
Okay. So do we want to vote on these three things separately?
Yeah.
Yes. So the first one, I'll entertain a motion for the fall capital request.
So we need to actually vote, we need to vote the number.
The number of.
I don't have a.
Give it up.
All right. So I make a motion to request three, that's sorry, 2,372,569 dollars for town meeting, for the school's capital request, consisting of 1,350,000 for Placentino Miller roof repaired to go with the MSBA project, 232,750 for technology replacement, 135,910 for the flag road, 275,000 to the Placentino Miller sidewalk and parking, and 378,909 to replenish the HVAC rooftop fund.
Second by Don. All in favor? Carrie's?
And there are some other potential funding sources for some of these things that we've been having conversations with the community about. If, depending on where sort of numbers come in.
Okay. And then the second item to sponsor a warrant article for the lease of solar for Placentino and Rams?
Right. So I make a motion to that the school committee support the sponsoring of a warrant article for the lease of solar at Placentino and Rams.
Second by Don. All in favor? Passes. And then finally, just support for the flag field.
So moved.
Second by Don. All in favor? Okay.
I think that was everything.
I think that was. So you're done with budget?
Yeah.
For now.
Okay. Do you want to move on to communications?
Yes. Communications Subcommittee met on, yesterday, yesterday, okay. Weeks ago, but we met yesterday, really focused around two things. So the first thing is how we can better communicate with the community. Point of the communications Subcommittee. We discussed a few ideas, including a newsletter that we can post out. Also, because I will take the fault for this, so Hillary and Joe will give it. Potentially doing short videos. But if they even, where the world's moving, a newsletter could be proposed. And we won't produce one, but how do we create also little snippets of updates? More to come on that. We're going to discuss further later in our next update. But the, the other thing we discussed was with the, already, I mean, week three now, with the start times update that Dr. Jordan provided, we really want to share with the community on a broader basis, really the positive news that we're seeing. And that adds not to take in light of the areas of opportunity we have. We certainly have those. We have specific opportunities with the plus six we could discuss. But really, I'm focused on two, like the whole list that, like we went through with Dr. Jordan's. So in your packet is an update.
I did, yeah.
And I will, we are proposing to share with the community. So we'll pin it up as we typically do, make the edits, and the goal will be to vote to set it out.
One would remove the comparison to, to next year to be first and include the chart that Dr. Jordan provided. I think just starting off with sort of the, I don't want to call them negatives, but the sort of the moving backwards is. Just let's, you know, start off with, lead with the, the really good news. And then.
Issues with charts is kind of what we need to do, so I will do my best.
Leave it to you.
Thank you.
I think that we need to highlight more the, the hard work and effort of the central office administration as well as the, you know, especially the Placentino Miller administrators and, and just even, you know, teachers and, you know.
And bus drivers, we have to leave.
And the hard work of the bus drivers. Adjusting to the new changes, being out there for the kids, helping to cross Woodland.
So we did put at the end, I think it's a little premature to Woodland just yet. I was not going to look up with that.
No, I wasn't saying, we talked about what I've seen, the students crossing Woodland from the road. There, there are staff out there helping the students cross the road.
You want to make edits while we're going?
I, I have to, I would have to request that, I think that seems really difficult.
So none of us have access to the chart?
Oh, can I?
Can you give us access there?
I'll try.
I don't, I, I think.
I'm working on this.
To get me access. But you can do the chart later.
We got, we're going to vote on it, so.
I think it's really good later.
I just gave him the access.
He gave him, all right. I'm not doing it the right way. Okay, good.
I have a school committee group, so I just do it at once.
Good. Thank you.
The only thing I will say, Dan, and everyone, trying to keep it short and sweet, four pages of an update.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree with everyone. She did a video. It's so perfect. I'll take her video.
Dear mug.
You can do this up there. Yeah, I got the chart. Let's get this first.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Taylor.
You have two versions.
Okay. I thought Dr. Jordan was going to say.
He did. It's the same chocolate.
Can you center the numbers? Because it's a little one. Something between that and the picture. Are we going to put the chart below the bullets?
Do you need all of those bullets though? Because they're kind of redundant. I don't know. Does it help to have it both written out and on the chart? If it is, that's fine.
I mean, I said we could probably eliminate the third bullet. Or no one's been, and more happening at Saturday. Bullet? Kill the third bullet?
Yes.
I'm not sure how officially to do this, but can I make a motion to approve the school start time letter as written? Necessarily. Hasn't ended.
And, and give Frank permission to tweak any, any minor non-substantive changes.
Okay.
I'm working on one. Second, second.
Yeah. Non substantial changes.
Did you hear your second one?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All in favor? Sorry. That passes.
And I'll get that to Dan tomorrow morning. We will send it to, obviously, anyone who's on the list, students included. on the list, students included.
What do you use on those students?
Third. I get it, okay.
And then the community, let's go.
The signups for the community updates are still ongoing.
Good.
It's open, so, I know that was a big win at the end of last school year, still is going, so if you want to subscribe to our communications, I don't have the one in front of me, but we should probably send out an update at the beginning of the year, so I'll work with Dan tomorrow, I also should.
To see that.
Invite as many people to sign up. Okay, I think that was all of communications.
Great. Policy, we kind of covered a bunch, but...
Yep, and we're gonna meet again in early October, and we're gonna submit.
And we're done with budget, superintendent Eva, and then math advisory.
We met on Tuesday, we reviewed the, all the information that the group had collected in their research over the summer, looking at different programs in surrounding districts, looking at data in Halston, comparison with the state, and comparison with different districts, and we set our calendar for the rest of the year, so we'll get those meetings up on the calendar, we meet again in about two weeks.
How many are in the group?
It's about ten, I'd have to look, but it's a nice representation of, it's mostly middle school teachers, but we have elementary and preschool representation, we have administration from the middle school, and we have parent records of others as well.
Great, great. And then, update on the superintendent's search firm.
Yes, so in your packet, in the folder, was the, we still have not received.
I, I don't think there are ones.
Yeah, I don't think so. No, others will submit Monday, so, I believe we have five firms that have submitted proposals. And I did update in the document, because some were mistranslated, but the overall ranking priority that we based on stood the same. And what we did was, we took the proposals, we also went through in detail, and based on eight different criteria, experience and track record, so previous performance and searches, the approach and methodology, community engagement, which I know is going to be huge for this, if we think through the process, diversity, inclusion, costing value, timeline, schedule, services and guarantees, references and credentials, so those eight criterias how we scored from one to five for each of the submissions, and I correct myself, we had four submissions, as we're told. Overall, right now, of the four, HYA, Hazard Young, Patea Associates, has scored the highest, next by McPherson and Jacobson, respectfully, respectfully, thirty-five was HYA, compared to thirty-two point five for Jacobson, the other two, which were MASC and Teaching and Learning Alliance ranked lower. So all of these were based on, and I really have to thank Hillary, she's helped here, she was huge in terms of getting outreach, we talked about it earlier, meaning how challenging it was to get firms to apply once, you know, we reached out and we, I think the nerve, the, the flexibility of the RFP man scares people, when we said, hey, submit a proposal, they started coming in pretty quickly. So with that, we ranked in, there's comments for each one of why it was ranked the way it was, obviously, open to interpretation, open to updates, right now, this is where we feel at, we are at, Sarah and Don, I would do advise, the next steps is, if you guys want to bring in any of these firms in a subsequent meeting to walk through the proposal.
Have them do a presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a breakdown, like, like, so HYA, for example, sixteen hundred searches, are plentiful, but do we have a kind of breakdown of how often they've worked in Massachusetts?
Yes, at the bottom, because I know that question came up, just making sure it's in a couple of, yes, in the bottom is a chart that had representative examples of their successful searches, so we'll see for HYA, specifically in this area, what is moving, there's some in New York, Virginia, I am aware of Barrington, Rhode Island, so that is another, I know there's various self-approaches presented, yeah, there's obviously Nazco's with Wisconsin, or South Dakota, so all of them are listed there, we can go through, I think if we decide to invite them to bring case studies in terms of specific, you know, taking it as an example, to walk through the process they took, and then why they believe they were successful in that search.
So obviously, Woodland School Development Council and MASC are, you know, sort of the most Massachusetts sort of centric.
Yes.
But at the same time, I think that HYA has done significantly more searches that have worked in Massachusetts. I also, you know, liked their, their language around, you know, specifically looking to target recruiting channels for diverse candidates, and if you just look at overall, your score, which I assumed was consistent across all the different ones, they rated the highest amongst the most categories, and the lowest was, was obviously they are on the more costly side, but not, not crazy difference in cost.
No, it was well within our expectation, like, so, well within what we expected, but the most costly of the...
But they outscored pretty much everyone in almost every category except for, for cost, so, you know, I, we get that, I think we certainly have them in, but I think it almost, I would be ready to report with HYA today, and sort of operate as Don and Sarah to sort of mentor negotiations over the contracting, and have them come in next week, your process would start, or next time, your process would start, the conversation, to start the process. If you look at their schedule, it starts in September, and if we don't win, we can make choice until next week, next time, it won't start until mid-October.
I would agree with that, Dan. I think certainly if you want to get them, we're ready, McPherson, Jacobson have a pretty good shot compared as well, but I do want to make sure in, for the community, we start this process. I could have missed it, but McPherson didn't disclose a cost, but not even that.
And if you look across their scores, they're almost always lower than HYA for your capital.
Did you get a sense of who, there's like a hundred and thirty-five associates with HYA all over the country, someone coming in to do this, or are they trying to do a lot of this work remotely? Who would be, would they come here and run this live with the community, sit down and speak with people, or are they intending?
That is a, that is a, I think we need to think through questions that maybe are not present in the proposal, but specific to what we want them to do, to make sure they can do it.
So I'd be hesitant to vote until we have some of those questions answered, right? Because while they might have a very good track record nationwide, I'm not sure we want them running it from a computer screen while people are sitting there.
Totally fair. Does it make sense that we bring, if we feel confident, we bring them in, we all think through questions we may have, specific that may not be in the proposal, and next meeting, vote, I do agree with Dan, if we keep pushing it, then we'll get into the holidays soon.
No.
It's a hard process to overcome.
Oh, okay. I wonder if it would be worth talking to Newton to find out what their experience was with them?
I can also jump to Barrington, that close ties there, so.
I do, yeah. I actually think that would be helpful to, because that's, I think my only concern is I don't think they have done a lot in Massachusetts, maybe Rhode Island is close enough, but Newton is a great district, so.
Well, I think interesting, this, the Newton search was the one where the new superintendent was hired, so.
They didn't go too far.
You didn't, no, you didn't go too far, so they clearly worked within the community. I just, I think that they, or so, their forty-two page sort of documentation, obviously wasn't very specific for us, but it's incredibly comprehensive, and, you know, given their, their timeline, if you push it later, it's going to push everything back significantly, and this is our beginning to, you know, February, March of twenty twenty-six, as for the final.
To not wait two weeks, does it make sense to vote to move forward contingent of specific questions?
Sure.
I think we should move forward, but also be weary, not weary, but get our questions answered before we say yes for moving forward with this.
I would be comfortable giving Don Sarah to sort of...
I would as well.
Does the committee want to narrow it down to two or three potential search committees?
We'll be having four.
That's right, so, right.
Two.
How do you feel about that, on the rating?
And then you guys sort of take out three, you know, two more additions?
Yeah.
So then would the second one be vision?
I would, well.
What did you like about them?
Do you want to start?
Similar track record, pricing, I think for all of these, I mean, we did also look outside of their proposals, did not include it, to kind of get a range of what we would expect, so what is listed in there is what others have said, at least, I don't know in reality, so I think that's one example where we need more information, they were not clear on timeline, schedule, like HYA.
The only thing is, would be doing NESTC, because there are, they could do a choice between local versus national, and where do the score differences between?
It was like two points.
These, I mean, if you look, McPherson's only done one Massachusetts search, two recently.
That's with a weighted total, it's not necessarily flip a coin, McPherson did score two and a half points lower than HYA, according to a weighted total, but the others were respectively twenty-six point five, twenty-nine point five, so.
So you'd take McPherson over NESTC, despite the fact that they don't have the local, I mean, my only thought was just, you know, picking a local, if you want two, would be to pick a local, one of the locals to compare to.
Any ways we can flavor this.
But I'm, but I'm, I mean, I, doesn't sound uncomfortable, but I...
I think as a challenger, Dan, you were getting a point, like, we would be comparing two likes, or, you know, let's take a challenger that is different, be local, regardless of the scoring, like, they didn't score horribly, like, we didn't get down to like a five, so I would, I would support looking at HYA and NASDAQ.
NASDAQ or MASC? You like, you like Dan?
NASDAQ had a better proposal.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, MASC is not, sorry, I uploaded the wrong chart, but MASC also said, they were below all three of the searches. They're at twenty-six, so apologies for that. I think they just scored slightly below each other.
I, I guess I just struggle with, I feel like they have the experience in Massachusetts, right, many, many people that are working within it have worked with them, with those educators through the years, and also often know the district as well, so it's sometimes about a good match.
Yeah. My perspective is, HYA is the, what we're looking at right now, but we can pull in a challenger to...
I, I think I thought their, their proposal was the strongest, particularly in a couple of the areas that we were most interested in, you know, the community engagement piece, the diversity piece, but both NASDAQ and MASC also got good proposals. I definitely bring in, having worked with the other districts.
So we can, NASDAQ doing the recent, often the search, you know, picking internal.
Given the breadth that MASC has, I mean, it makes sense to potentially have that too. But I do think we should move it to one challenger, so.
Yeah, yeah. And you've done a tremendous, you guys have done a tremendous amount of work on this, and I trust your judgment evaluation on this, but if we were to limit it to, do you have a strong preference over MASC or NASDAQ? Got feeling?
I mean, one challenge with MASC is that they didn't provide a breakdown of costs, NASDAQ did, and it was under what we expected, that would actually only bring, one more thing.
There was, there was, they had the sample contract, that had...
MASC?
Yeah, that did have, it's on page...
I would like the challenger, but it reset protect, it's weird.
Yeah, right, right.
They're all in the packet, though.
I mean, it's, it's, cost wise, they're pretty favorable.
Oh, they are, yeah.
So were they similar to NASDAQ?
They're similar to NASDAQ, yes.
Okay, and less than HYA?
Yes. In other areas, their proposals are pretty similar, so I don't have a strong preference against them.
I feel like MASC is, they focus more just, obviously, just in Massachusetts, but, so I don't know if that's helpful, or not.
Can we take the approach of, I was right to fit, I don't know if limiting geography or that is a benefit or a downside. But I have the whole rules, the levels, I can understand these are districts, like districts, so.
And I feel like the three of you have spent some time looking through all of this, you probably don't have that many questions, because you pulled them out already, but I guess if you do, we have a little bit of time to reach out on them, and so, is the idea that when we come back on September, that we will bring someone back to present, or we will select already?
I think it might be helpful before we move forward to have them come in, but with good, like, unless there's something that's completely not aligned with what we're trying to achieve, like that is, versus signing today, or voting today and saying, we're going, because if something catches off guard, then it's, questions come up, we do want to make sure we get all of our questions answered. And you raised a good one, like, how are they going to conduct the search? I don't think any proposal said, we're going to be boots on the ground or remote, so we want to have certain bad questions.
I feel like the lack of telling us that might be the, just knowing that it's nationwide, I just want to make sure, I think it would be important, people in the community who may feel that are heard, if twenty people are here in a room, they don't expect someone to be on a screen across the country.
Yes, they did have a line for expenses, which included travel, so I'm assuming that, you know, that would hit that one, that would not estimate, so, again, where costs can go up, but well within the range of course. I do know the chairman of the meeting, the school committee, who recently used NASDAQ, it looks like I can reach out to him, see what their experience is like. Yeah, I think each of us go, there's some children who pay, but that makes most sense, but with the intention... But with the intention to come back and officially closer forward by next meeting.
Okay, that sounds good.
Sarah, we can connect to, I want to prepare to any firm we ask to move in, so we want to discuss next day or so, standing in invite just on their, I hate to invite them before.
Yeah, right.
And they can invite, they could join us remotely, obviously.
Okay. Do we need to vote on anything, or just?
I mean, you can vote, so...
So you want, we want to vote off of it?
No, but it's, what, yeah, what is, go and make a motion.
I think we want to authorize Dawn and Sarah to sort of make a decision.
I'm hearing different things, I'm hearing, decide tonight, leave Sarah and Dawn to decide, or, or have someone come back, narrow it down, and have them come back and make a presentation, whether remote or live, and then vote on the twenty-fifth.
I'm comfortable making a decision tonight, it does not sound like everyone is, so my first second alternative, so that we can have a decision made by the time we have the chosen group in to start the process and through a discussion with us, through the, through a presentation to us, would be to authorize you guys to...
But they're presenting after we've selected them?
Well, no, you would be talking, you would maybe try to talk to them in the interim.
Right, but are you saying we've selected them, and then we say, and then come?
No, then they start, then they come talk to us to start the process, just like...
So are you saying that we vote on tonight on which one, or that we vote to authorize Sarah and Dawn to?
I would have voted on which one tonight, but if they are not, then it would be, that would, like, the compromise.
Is it possible, could we send questions, I agree with making it seem a smaller group than having Sarah and Dawn lead it, but if we can send questions to both of you, then we can get clarified with that firm, whatever firm it is, and if you can authorize me to make the decision, I'm good.
You can question this to the chair.
We will send questions to the chairman.
They're not violated.
Just confirm.
No, I'm just saying.
Does that, does that look for everyone, I mean, I think we do...
I am, except that I think I have somewhat of a sense of where, you guys have looked to this, and I see the ranking system, and we've now talked about this, I think I know sort of where you're reading, but I guess Trace, to the extent, like, what are your thoughts on it? And the answer might be, you don't know yet, because you still have more questions, and that's fine, but if you're authorized, Sarah and I, to make a decision, I wanted to make sure we're hitting people's questions, that they felt like they've reviewed it, and that it's the committee's decision.
I don't fully know for sure. Your question about the impression, I think, is probably the biggest concern, because I don't think it's fair to the community to ask them to use all remotely. And so I would feel comfortable with you both handling that, but I would not feel comfortable voting today without answering that question in particular.
It sounds like we should need to vote on twenty-fifth, and we need to probably bring in one, if not two, if there's still, if there's still things we're not clear about, we can give it for a presentation, like, maybe for the first part of the meeting, and then we probably vote by the end of the next meeting.
I think that makes the most sense. There's many ways we can scan this, but right now, I think there's definitely a sense of, you know, you know, right when there's ready, you guys have seen it, but I think there's some questions, we're trying to get comfortable, what, that you don't know, or...
I mean, this is great work, I agree with your metrics, your ranking system, that's, you know, you did a lot of work on these proposals, and at least tonight, we've accomplished, you know, kind of narrowing down.
Yeah, and I always have the potential, but at the same time, this is what we're discussing, so I think it's fair for everyone in the committee to take at least one, or talk with the firm, we're comfortable with them. I think Sarah, you and Dawn decide who we bring in, one, two, three, and be prepared to vote. Spring a moment, and be prepared to vote.
And we'll be here till two o'clock in the morning.
They will deliver their presentation.
Yes, right, you guys get, you get ten minutes to settle yourselves.
I'll hold them.
And then I do suggest that each of us go out and do a little research as well, to help perform the vote and then discuss.
So it's likely going to be HYA, and then either MASC or Nazdech. Okay, I think that's, sounds reasonable.
Is it reasonable to say if you have additional questions, there's a lot of information here, we've thought about it, and you've got the perspective of other people with the rankings, maybe try and get the questions to us by Monday, Tuesday? Is that reasonable?
Can there be any questions of the proposals, or any questions that are not in their proposals that we should ask?
Okay, so then no vote right now?
I assume, I'm, I'm, I'm fine. Want to make sure everyone's comfortable.
Okay, I think at this point, we're ready to adjourn.
To executive session.
To executive session, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of an, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation, litigating position of the public body that Chair so declares.
And from which we will not return.
So.
Second.
Do I do a poll call? Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Hillary, yes?
Tracy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dawn? And I'm a yes, so, good night, Hollston.